Good evening. Glad to see all these bright, shiny faces. Okay, I take that back. I'm glad to see these faces. Glad, honestly glad to have you here tonight and looks like we have just inside of, or just enough for a quorum, so we'll call the meeting to order and Commissioner Terry will lead us in prayer.
Please join me in prayer. God Almighty, we thank you for the gift of life and the opportunity to serve the people of our city. We ask that you help us to act with character and conviction, to listen with understanding and goodwill, and to speak with charity and restraint. Give us a spirit of service and guide us to be the leaders your people need. Help us to listen with humility, open minds and spirits, and to renew our spirits to appreciate the joy of helping to build a community worthy of the human person. In your goodness and love, amen.
Thank you. Do we have a young Mr. Nolmeyer who would lead us in the pledge? You, no? That's okay. You don't have to. Very good. Just come up here. Thank you very much. As you'll notice, you're down to the third string Tony Romo quarterback tonight, so may struggle a little bit, but we'll get it done. Right now, anybody have any changes they would like to make to the agenda? Is it okay as presented? Everybody good? Okay. So at this time, I'd like to ask anyone who wants to speak on one of the agenda items, if you'd hold your hand up. I'll just call on you one at a time and if you could keep it to like three minutes or so, that would be great. If you run a little longer, that's okay too, but we'll, we'll start on this side and work this way. Who's over here? Just identify yourself when you come up, please, just so we know who we're talking to.
Hello, thank you. Mark Dexter is my name. And I wanted to speak briefly on the proposed tax increase. I have three points. Number one, it's too dramatic of an increase at the same time. It's 33 percent increase on payroll taxes and a 40 percent increase on the net profits tax. And there are certainly a lot of worthwhile projects on the list that our able city manager has prepared. The point I'd like to make is we hoping, I say we, some friends I'll mention in just a minute, are hoping that some of the projects can be scaled back or postponed to a later time. And the last point is we're spending a lot of money with the city and the county to attract industry. And it seems to me that we would be placing ourselves in a less competitive position by imposing this dramatic tax increase at this time. I talked to some fellow realtors and I'm a real estate broker. They wanted me to just say that they concur with my points, and that's Evelyn Page of Grant Real Estate, Betsy Wilson of Wilson Real Estate, and Logan Germin of Germin Real Estate, who's our president of our Kentucky Association Realtors Board, and a friend of mine, George Cunningham, is a former commissioner. We served together back in the eighties. He also wanted to address the matter. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is George Cunningham, and to the best of my knowledge, this is the first time I've ever sat over here. I've sat over there for quite a few years. Several sources have told me that Danville's reputation is anti-business, and I really believe that this kind of a raise in the taxes and, and the way that the city is planning on spending an awful lot of money is certainly not going to help us in that situation. And I also, as Mark, would ask you to consider either rolling back the number a little bit or at this time do not enact this huge raise. You know, a 35 and a 40 percent raise is an awful big raise. I can't remember a time when I was on the commission that we raised anything in that larger number. Thank you.
Thank you. Good to see you again, by the way. Anybody else on this side? We will move towards the middle. Somebody up front here? Go ahead, Jane.
Good evening. My name is Jane Brantley. I just wanted to come before you this evening to speak in support of funding for the Grace Cafe. I volunteer at the Grace Cafe on a regular basis, and I have seen some of the wonderful work that this entity in our community does. It has also drawn a lot of attention, falling right in with our City of Firsts logo. It's the first pay what you can cafe in Kentucky, and as such, it has garnered a lot of wonderful publicity for our city. The governor has been here and served meals at Grace Cafe and spoken highly of it. We've had television crews from KET here, from several news associations, so we're getting out the word about positive things in Danville and helping a lot of people along the way. I've seen folks come in there and volunteer and come back and volunteer and learn how to deal with the public, how to bus tables, how to greet people, and they might not have that opportunity in such a loving and grace-filled environment. So I encourage your support for that entity. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. My name is Joni Lukens. I'm a citizen of Danville, and I also come to speak in support of Grace Cafe. Hunger is rampant in our community. More than one in five people in our community is facing food insecurity, and it's even higher among our children. This is a new initiative. This is not the same old, same old. It's a new way to address hunger. It's not a handout. It's not a giveaway program like a food bank or a soup kitchen. Grace Cafe is one of, as Jane mentioned, one of maybe 65 pay what you can cafes across the country, and they have a proven track record of reducing food insecurity in their communities. We've tried food banks and soup kitchens for over 60 years in this country, and the percentage of hungry people has done nothing but rise. We have been applying a crisis solution that's handing out food to a chronic problem. This is a new way, I think a better way. It's not handing things out. It's inviting people in to your community, the community of Grace Cafe, and it is a community. I'm sure you've been in there and you have seen how people come together, people from all walks of life, across socioeconomic barriers in our community. There's no distinction among citizens because no one knows who pays full fare, who pays more than that, and who volunteers for their, in exchange for their meal. No one gets it free. You, everyone has something to offer, and so even if it is your labor, you're paying for your meal with that labor. It preserves the dignity of everybody in our community, and it gives people a chance to participate in their own amelioration, which I think is very important. This is a new way to address hunger, and I'm convinced it's a better way. So I'd appreciate your serious consideration of allocating funds for Grace Cafe. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening, commissioners. My name's Jack Cavanaugh. I'm a fairly new resident of Danville, if you would. I spend majority of my time here and sometime in Fort Worth, Texas. I'm a former transportation engineer for the Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission, and I understand your dilemma probably more than most. The problem here that you face, as the young lady here so eloquently pointed out, is that 19 percent of the people in Boyle County are below the poverty level. That's unbelievable. When I was with the Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission, which is Philadelphia, nine other counties, and it involved two states, Pennsylvania and New Jersey, I think the poverty level, even with the ghettos in Philadelphia and Camden, our poverty level was around 7.2. So this is, and I know you're trying to bring business in, and I applaud that, but Grace Cafe was, not only for all the points that this young lady made, they are offering a healthy alternative to the food banks. What do you get in the food banks? Okay, you get the leftovers. You get the stuff that's about to go out of date. You get the starches, the sugars. We have a problem with obesity in this country, and you know, everything that's sold at Grace Cafe is locally sourced. It's healthy, and besides, you know, giving people the ability to feel like they're contributing something for the meal, whether it's their work or a buck here or a buck there, you know, you are treating the health of the community as well. Okay? So right now, only 62 percent of Grace Cafe, Grace Cafe, I'm sorry, is funded by the actual donations at the door. Okay? So you know, there's a definite need to get some extra funding to keep this, what I think is a very valuable and unique resource here in Danville. I applaud the effort, and I would certainly ask you folks to give it serious consideration. I know you went from 13,000 to $7,000, but I would ask you to hold the line at that. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Is it Cavanaugh? Is that Mr. Cavanaugh is your last name? Thank you. Anybody else down? Yes, ma'am. I don't know you, but come on up.
I was coming here for another reason, but I'm going to speak out. I'm Paula Fowler. I do have to say that the Chamber of Commerce has concerns about the latest proposed tax increases, and we will be reviewing and discussing them. Two years ago, you had four tax increases, including payroll and net profits. Since then, you've had an insurance premium increase in the community. Now these two proposed taxes again, and you've already heard the calculations on how high these increases are. This doesn't count school tax increases, including recent nickel tax increases. I'm just concerned that we're reaching a point of not being competitive in the region, so.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Going, what's going, oh, I see a hand. Come on ahead, Ms. Brown.
I'm Wilma Brown. First of all, I want to say some of my best friends are historic preservationists, and many of them are in the audience tonight. However, I do want to make a comment on the new, the proposed new staff position of historic preservationist, excuse me. The purpose of this position is in order for Danville to be a certified local government by the Kentucky Heritage Council, and that's a, that's a, that's a fine position to hold, but in light of the raise in, proposed raise in taxes and other needs that we have, I really think if Danville has enough money to hire new staff, to especially instigate a new staff position, that should be in the order of someone in essential services like the fire personnel or law enforcement personnel, or if we have an extra $80,000 a year, perhaps it should go to raise the salaries of all of our people. So I think that ARB and Boyle Landmark Trust are doing an excellent job in our community in advocating for historic preservation, and at this time, I do not see a need for a staff person to be doing that.
Thank you. Anybody else? Make sure you get us a shot. It's a theoretical shot, that's not an actual shot. All right, we'll move along then and thank everyone for their comments. The first item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from the past two meetings. Do I have a motion?
Sure, I'll move to approve the minutes of the meetings of 5:08, 2017, and 5:11, 2017.
Second.
Had a motion and a second. Any discussion needed, changes, amendments? All in favor of the minutes as presented signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item two is recognition of the Boyle County, Leadership Boyle County 2017 class. So what we're going to do, we're going to be over here, and we're going to call your name, and we've got a little something for you. Ms. Paula, you go ahead if you want to.
I just want to introduce, can I go ahead and introduce all of them and let them know?
We're going to have them stand down here since there's.
Yeah.
For those of you that, that don't know, the Danville Boyle County Chamber of Commerce oversees the Leadership Boyle County class. We've done so since its inception in 1983, and every other year now, we graduate both youth from the high schools and adults. And this year, we had 20 in the class, which is capacity, and I just want to recognize, and for those of you that are here, do you want me to have them come up as I call their names? All right, Kara Bastin, alphabetically, you get to go first. Kara's with U.S. Bank. Then. Then Shelley Bigelow, come on up. Shelley's with Farmers National Bank. Michelle Carter with Bluegrass Community and Technical College. Sarah Daniel with Coldwell Banker VIP Realty. I don't think Beth Gude made it tonight. She's with Danville Independent Schools. So Gail Gottschall's next. Gail's with Fort Knox Federal Credit Union. And Jamie Molesky didn't make it either. She's with Bluegrass Community and Technical College, but Patrick Noltemeyer was doing dual service tonight. Patrick's with Center College. Jacob Pankey is with Boyle County Fiscal Court. Tina Patel's with LGE and KU, but I don't think she's out of work yet. Then one of your own, Donna Peak, City of Danville. She was a rabble rouser all, all the time. Heather Pennington with Delcato Law Group. Bert Piper with Efer McDowell Health. Cody Polston with Hampton Inn. Payden Ty from Blue Moon Insurance Agency didn't make it. And I don't think Mandy Van Hook's here either from LGE and KU. Nicholas Wade, heart of Danville. And I don't see our last three. Brent Welch is Farmers National Bank. I know he had a commitment in Lexington. Brent Williams is Berkman Nutrition, and David Young is Boyle County Schools, but all of them started out, when did we start? In September with a two-day retreat, and then they had a full day every single month from October through May, and they just graduated May 15th, I think. So 20 new leaders that you can all tap for commission-appointed different seats for all of our different boards here, so. Thank you.
Look, they got the cool stuff and they're leaving. Thank you, Paula, for doing that. The next item on the agenda is the Cemetery Committee report by Ms. Lewis.
I'm back to tell you things you've heard before. If you haven't been to the cemeteries, they're looking good. The staff has done a great job getting things ready for Memorial Day. We've cleaned up as much as we can, but that doesn't mean we're through, because we'd like to invite y'all to participate with us in a cemetery cleanup day on June the 15th from 10 to 2. We're going to use the public works people, the summer workers, and all community volunteers that want to come and help us make the cemeteries look better. There are lots of things that we don't have staff to provide the service, and this is what we're going to hope members of the community can help us do. There's overgrown places that we can cut back and things that can't be done by the mowing crews. So put that on your calendar, the 15th of June. It's a Thursday. We're doing it in the middle of the week because that was when the summer workers were available and the staff. So put that on your calendars. I'd also like to remind everybody that the Friends of the Cemetery is something that you can do to make a donation for honoring somebody or remembering them. It's, we're asking for a $50 donation, but this goes totally into bettering the cemeteries in Danville. It doesn't go into salaries. It goes strictly into beautifying and doing the things we need. And you three sitting up there above all know how little money actually goes into the cemeteries. It isn't nearly enough, but this is one way we have come up with to try and increase the amounts of money that we might have for landscaping and other things that we just can't do with what the city has in the budget. That brings on also the same old question of paving. I know you put $10,000 in the budget, but right now, Tom tells me we can get paving material at the lowest price we ever have, and we're using the state price, less 5%, which makes it $63 a time. And for, if you could find a little more extra money, for $20,000, we could pave 3,600 square feet, and for $30,000, now that's, that would be 20 above our 10, we could pave the, and finish the paving at the cemeteries. Now, compared to some of the other expenses I've seen looked at, that's a drop in the bucket, but it would give back more to the community than a lot of other things would, and it would be more appreciated by a lot of the citizens who visit regularly. So please look at maybe padding the pot just a little more with some additional paving, because Tom assures us that we're never going to get it for that price again, and I, I believe him. And I'm doing my homework. I'm working with Donna Fetter to make the cemeteries part of the Clean Communities Grant. There's not a whole lot we can use, but we are asking for receptacles for trash and for recycling for both cemeteries, and Donna assures me that she thinks that can be worked into the Clean Communities Grant. I have asked Jason and Tom to tell me exactly what they want in the way of waste and trash receptacles, and we're going to try our best to get more because they are never, there's never enough. We have put out just some barrels and things of that nature for extra pickups for Memorial Day, but that's, hopefully, these will be much more sightly, and they will be a very pleasant addition to the cemeteries. And this you've heard before too. Right now, we're looking at four years of burial space at Bellevue. We have less than 400 lots left, and at this rate, we are burying approximately 100 graves a year. So that's easy math to do. Now, we've been doing some math on the other side. If we could find an acre of, for each acre of property we might find, we can, whatever, I don't know what you would have to pay for it now. I know what we've talked about in the past, but at the rate, we, we figure 1,000 graves per acre, and that is after remediation, landscaping, roads, and everything of that nature. I've talked to Tom at length about this, and we figure 1,000 graves per acre, and at $750 per grave, we're looking at a return to the city of $750,000. So we can afford it if we could find the property. It is, I mean, those figures show that it would certainly pay for itself, and unfortunately, if we don't find some property in four years, the only long-range plan we can come up with is to lock the gates, because that's about all there's going to be at Bellevue. Now, at Hillendale, there are, there is no problem with grave space. There is lots and lots to be developed. The city owns a considerable amount of acreage at Hilldale, and it can be developed. I've talked with Tom. He assures me that there is lots of topsoil and dirt that's being handled from all the city projects. In fact, with the water plant, he's had to reach the point where he takes dirt to Harrodsburg because we don't have any place to put it, and all of that could be used for remediation of property if we could find it. So these are things that I'm laying at your door because it's something we do have to face. Either Bellevue is going to pardon the pun, it's going to be a dead cemetery if we don't find more space. I urge you to please help me look at ways to improve the cemeteries. We have a really good committee that works hard. They're very committed. They're very dedicated, and give us your ideas as well. The committee meets the second Tuesday of each month here at City Hall at 4:00 PM. Come and visit with us anytime, but our main concern is the things that need doing now, and that includes the paving, the cleanups, the acquisition of more property, and these are the things that are going to be absolutely necessary in the next few years. Thank you. If you have any questions, you know where to find me.
Thank you, ma'am. Item four is the Safe Communities Initiative update. Dr. Blevins.
Well, the good news is I'm not asking for any money.
Stay as long as you want. Stay right there.
But you all actually invested $500, as did the fiscal court, and that was true in both Lincoln, Garrett, and Mercer Counties. All of that was done to form our Central Kentucky Safe Communities accreditation, and we are, I guess, a year in the process, and the way they set this up is that each of those task forces, each of those counties, excuse me, have a task force that meets. excuse me, have a task force that meets. And so Boyle County, even though you're part of a four-county coalition, have your own separate task force. And of course, I'm going to read the first of this to kind of remind you what the Safe Communities Accreditation Initiative is. It is a certification process for planning and implementation to make communities safer places by the development of a broad coalition of community groups, health, government, transportation, law enforcement, business and industry, education, civic groups, and institutions. And really what it does is it brings everybody together to work on initiatives that we can do to make our communities safer. Bert Piper is with me today. He is your chairman of the Boyle County Safe Communities Task Force. I think you all received a brochure. And in the brochure, it kind of outlines and highlights some of the things that have happened. I am happy to announce that in a year's time, oh, I should back up just a little bit. So we are in this accreditation process. We are in the middle of writing the application. They get you started and want you to be in it to a year before you even apply. So we are now in the middle of applying for that. We will have a site visit and hopefully by the end of the year, have it wrapped up and be an accredited safe community. As you can see from the brochure, we are a storm-ready community. We have secured and distributed 38-plus hearing impaired smoke detectors. And we hosted the police and sheriff community relations night. In addition, we have about eight projects that have been completed and 21 that are in the works. So we are here to answer questions if you have questions.
What are some of the things you have in the works now?
You also have a sheet on that as well. And it shows an outline of, the first page that's highlighted under yellow shows those products, projects that we're considering. Under the green are projects that are ongoing. And those include such projects as the Blue Vial Program, a suicide prevention program, distracted driver. There's about 30 of these. Would you like, need to highlight some of those or? We have a yellow dot program and a whale program. It should look like this.
That in our extra? It is.
Tiny, yes, tiny print.
There we go. Thank you, okay. Yes, very good.
We also encourage that the current Boyle County Task Force has an average attendance of about 14 to 18 people. Rick is a very much an integral part of that, and we appreciate you all's participation in that. We would welcome anyone interested to join us. The more the merrier.
I would add others in the room. Ron Scott participates with us as does Chief Luke.
Thank you. Yeah. I think you might mention, too, I think Junction City did most of the work, but you guys were involved in pushing it along to get the lighting better at the traffic intersection down by Hardy's there where there was a death from a crossing. So that's happening, and so you should feel proud of yourselves.
As well as we're working on the crosswalk that leads across to Danville Schools to make that a little bit safer as well. We appreciate your support, and once we receive our accreditation, we'll be back to share that with you as well.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Scott, I think you have the next item. It's a discussion on 311 West Main.
Yes, sir. At our last City Commission meeting, the mayor indicated that he believed that the owner of 311 West Main Street would be submitting a plan of action to deal with the deficiencies that were, that had been noted by our Architectural Review Board. And so he asked the City Commission to pass over a discussion on the agenda at that meeting, pending receipt of that report. I want to advise you that I did receive, on behalf of the owner or potential owner of the building, a communication from their attorney that set forth some specifics with regard to their intent to restore and return that building to a condition that would not, that would basically take it out of its current status of being, I'm at a loss for words. Condemned, thank you. Condemned. But however, that response that I received by email had the direction from their attorney that that information was not to be disclosed to the public. It was a restricted communication from his client to the city manager acting in his capacity as city manager. I deem that to be inadequate, given the fact that the discussion is in the public venue and has been for a number of years. Our committee, our Architectural Review Board Committee, has over five years asked for an update in terms of the status of that. And while I do commend the owners for taking this initial step to indicate that they are willing to and planning to make improvements to the building, I do believe that that information should be fully disclosed to the public because the situation is in the public domain in its condemned status. So I was unwilling to make that decision until I talked with my attorney, our city's attorney, rather, who advises me that is, in his perception, the correct path, that the information should be made public. I don't have that tonight, but I will be presenting that to the City Commission along with any additional information that may be forthcoming from the attorney on behalf of the Hamblins at the next meeting. And then the City Commission can decide what action is appropriate.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Dexter, do you want to?
I just wanted to chime in briefly and say that it's, it would be common for communication like the one that was presented to the city manager in the private world to be confidential. It's not often that attorneys deal with people in the public arena or entities or public agencies like a municipality or the city of Danville. But by virtue of our formation, the law is clear that any communication or written document received by the city is by virtue a public record, therefore subject to disclosure and knowledge and input by the public at large unless a certain exception that is clearly defined in the Open Records Act is met. In this case, this type of communication would not fall under any accepted category. And therefore, whatever plan is submitted for that structure will be by its very nature public.
Just, just out of curiosity, Mr. Dexter, can you run through those exceptions? Or are there too many?
They're numerous. I can give you some of them.
Or maybe something that would relate to this?
Well, for instance, if there are personnel records, some personnel records, some disciplinary matters could be private until they are concluded. The appraisal reports are confidential unless, until an action becomes final. So you may get an appraisal on a structure and then decide to buy it. And after you purchase the building, the appraisal that you have is then public. You cannot keep it private after the building is acquired. Those are two exceptions. There are things, there are numerous because they list all public agencies. So things like test questions aren't public documents. I mean, they're very, very specific as they go through there. The structural, like the blueprints of your building for, those are a safety concern. Obviously, schematics, those are not public document, or they're public documents but not subject to disclosure. But they're, they're really very, very specific and finely crafted, and the law does, says they are strictly construed. So unless there is an exception that is dead on the document in front of you, you have no basis of keeping it confidential.
So generally, we're just, we're going to wait until we hear further? That's?
Yes. My intent is to bring this before the City Commission to request any additional clarification from the owner and his attorney and have a more complete report at the next meeting.
Very good. Thank you. Item six, also yours, Mr. Scott, a discussion of the fiscal year's 2017-2018 budget.
Yes, sir. Commission and members of the public in the audience, this is, I believe, the third time that I have had a somewhat formal review of the proposed budget. It was preliminary up until tonight's presentation, given the statutory framework, the city manager's responsibility to make a recommendation on the budget, that this is in the format of a proposed budget. So bear with me. It is going to be a briefer review tonight than on the two earlier occasions. So I'll just begin by saying that we have, I have developed a proposed budget, that is before the City Commission. We have had extensive discussion to this point in terms of reaching this point. The proposed budget does balance resources and appropriation, allows for the provision of essential services to our citizens as outlined in the budget and is recommended for your approval. As you know, and as the citizens may know, the city manager is responsible for preparing and submitting to the City Commission 30 days prior to the end of the fiscal year a recommendation on proposed annual budget. And it is the Board of Commissioners' requirement to vote on the budget as submitted and essentially to adopt a budget prior to the next fiscal year. The budget is a, is a planning document. It's a difficult one in some years because it encompasses our, our needs, our hopes, our aspirations. And it's a decision tool that often is not one that is easily reached by the City Commission because the Commission is required to sometimes sift through public policy issues and make some difficult decisions. It's a management tool, once adopted, for the city manager and department heads. And it should be a document that the citizens can easily read and follow in terms of how monies are being spent to deliver services and on their behalf in the community. It's also a legal document through which the legislative body appropriates funds sufficient to carry out the proper functioning of the city. And the principal obligation of the City Commission is to appropriate funds sufficient for that purpose. In the proposed budget for the city of Danville for the next fiscal year, our total resources are $57,940,456. It's proposed to appropriate $53,816,035, leaving total reserves of $4,124,421. And let me again say that we will have this on the city website for everyone to follow tomorrow, if not tonight, so that you won't be required to take copious notes in a short period of time. I want you to really just kind of understand the major points what I'm trying to make under this budget tonight. The proposed budget does address a number of major funding priorities and service areas. First and foremost, in our budget, it has a number of community development programs. Funding is provided for continued sidewalk improvements, $60,000, streetscape improvements on Main Street from Second to Fifth Street to redo our downtown sidewalks, to replace the Second Street Bridge. Well, the, the Main Street is in the amount of $484,250. The Second Street Bridge replacement, which is essential because it won't carry the weight of a fire truck across the bridge and it's in, in approaching unsafe condition otherwise, is $200,000. There's additional street paving recommended in the amount of $100,000. There's additional paving in our Millennium Park in the amount of $25,000. And there's an allocation to remove blighted property through demolition in the amount of $95,000. So these are what I would say, community improvement projects in the next year. We also have a number of capital improvements that are slated. These are in our utility fund I'm speaking of right now. We have had, over the past several years, communications from industry located in our industrial park. A number of those said we need greater water pressure in order to expand. Megat Breakin' is one of those that is in the process of doing so and at times has borderline water flow capacity for cooling of their furnaces. So we went through a rather extensive process this past year of seeking the Economic Development Act grant to receive funds to do those improvements and to continue water line improvements down to Perriville and to increase, increase their capacity for water in Perriville, which is not, I will say, as good as it should be at the present moment. We did receive that EDA grant. Our congressional focus says it's one of the largest they've ever seen appropriated in Kentucky in the amount of $980,000. That total project is $1.9 million, and that is slated to begin this fall. In order to qualify for the grant, the city had to guarantee, basically, that we would do the project. And so that one is in the hallmark of it's, it's committed. And it's a, it's a major improvement that will increase our current capacity for water flow in our industrial park and for Perriville, which is the system, of course, we bought and own in Perriville.
And that puts us, how much of that is, are we going to have to put forward?
Well, the balance of really about a million dollars. Now, we will have some carryover, a small carryover projected from completion of the water treatment plant improvement project to go towards that. But we will, that's part of a contemplated $10 million bond issue this fall. So these things get a little complicated. But the second major initiative is our fire station number one on Main Street, which is a general fund improvement. We learned in, I believe, 2005, four or five, when we did a master facilities planning effort at that time, and they identified the deficiencies in that Main, in that fire station at that time. We constructed this facility at City Hall and the police station and moved the police department from the fire station, in part because of the safety and other problems at the time. And there were other needs identified in that facility study going back in 2004 or five, including the need for a public works building, which we since remedied. And the fire station was, was still listed there, although subsequent to that initial finding. And some of you were here at the time, we did construct a new fire station on the bypass as well. So these are not new discoveries. These are long, non-addressed issues in our downtown fire station, which is essential to have as a safe working condition for our first responders and essential to protect all our businesses downtown and our residences and to maintain our great insurance services office, Class IV insurance classification that allows those who buy insurance on their properties to achieve a lower premium. That is going to begin. We had, we had the initial finding review a couple of weeks ago. We anticipate going through the actual design phase and actual beginning of that construction in the next fiscal year. And also to meet the long-awaited need to buy a new fire truck. Our current ladder truck, I believe, is 25 or 26 years old. I wouldn't say this except out of necessity, but often it's in the shop and not available for service. And that's not a desired outcome in terms of protection of those who might need to be rescued from higher elevated stories in our community. So that is also planned at last to be purchased next year. So between the, the fire ladder truck and the construction of the station, we're talking about $7.5 million. Well, I'm sorry, $7.5 million in the fire building alone, including some land acquisition costs probably to expand the footprint, and $1.5 million for the fire truck. That's going to require a half-million-dollar debt payment, annual debt payment. And, and, and there are no magic solutions here. I mean, we have put that off for a long time, and it is time to address that, in my opinion. We're also talking about next year implementing energy efficient improvement, energy efficiency improvements. We've spent the past almost two years going through an audit of all our energy usage in the town. And we are blessed to be a large provider of services. But our electrical usage is using very obsolete equipment at a very high cost. It costs us over annual, annually over a million dollars to, in essence, keep the lights on in our community. There's a way out of this that a lot of other cities have followed, taken advantage of the state law that permits cities to enter into public-private partnerships and to achieve guaranteed cost savings and to basically get the capital, equipment replaced in that process and to come out with a lower, with a lower net savings. So that's the, the direction that the City Commission has approved by contract. That will require also a bond issue beginning in the fall. And... That will require also a bond issue beginning in the fall in order to begin that implementation. Part of that energy efficiency improvement, improvement project was also, as you recall, the decision reached by the city instead of purchasing vehicles every year to basically enter into a lease program that could be canceled at any point in time, but that would also save us a considerable amount of money going forward as well. So to recap, a bond issue in the amount of ten million dollars is planned and recommended to be issued by the city for calendar year two thousand seventeen, to fund the water line improvements that I've mentioned to the industrial park and down to Perriville, and also the energy efficiency projects, that, that's ten million. To address the portion of the cost associated with the construction of the new Main Street Fire Station and the purchase of a new ladder truck, a bond issue in the approximate amount of seven-and-a-half million is planned for the future and recommended for the future. Both, and that latter one is recommended to be issued in two thousand eighteen calendar year, the first in the fall of two thousand seventeen. Both will be recommended for issuance in the next fiscal year in order, and we're separating them by calendar years in order to not exceed the ten-million-dollar calendar year limit to get the best favorable rates, rates on our bond issue. So these are addressing opportunities and needs that we have, in some cases, been, been aware of for many years. I don't know, frankly, that there is much wiggle room in any of that in terms of spending less. I, I haven't been able to see any other alternative other than a bond issue for those types of projects. City services, all current city services are proposed to be continued for the next year that we're currently providing. There's a long list of those that we provide in this community. You're familiar with most of those or all of those: law enforcement, code enforcement, fire protection, emergency nine-one-one services, public works, finance services, our administrative legislative services, our cemetery, our garbage contract services, although we supplement that contract with some money as well, cemetery, our parking, our stormwater, and other services. We're, I am proposing, given our dedicated staff providing all those services that we provide, as I think the county is planning to do, a cost of living increase of two percent that was computed by the state as being our cost of living for the next fiscal year, as well as the opportunity for merit increases up to the percent of one percent. Those are, are proposed to be provided for all city employees, full and part-time. Correction, the one percent is not applicable to part-time, but the cost of living would be applicable to part-time. Earlier, I talked about the fact that no additional staffing is proposed for other departments, and believe me, we could all use additional staff to meet the demands the city has, with two exceptions. I have proposed that we contract or hire, whatever's most economically worked out, additional staff services in, to allow our coach department to meet with our current agreement with the Heritage Council on a certified local government staffing to aid preservation efforts. And that's one person, either employee or contract. And the additional funding proposed was in our Communications nine-one-one center to hire four additional employees to implement the requested medical dispatch services. That would allow our hospital to become certified, a certified provider of certain cardiac services. It would enhance our response abilities to our citizens, and this medical dispatch initiative has been discussed also at the county government level, and they have said that they are also in support of providing this additional service. Speaking of city-county partnerships, I have recommended continuation funding of our economic development partnership at the existing level of a hundred-and-forty-five-thousand dollars, with the intent, just as in the current year, with the intent going forward that the twenty-five, twenty thousand dollars that we provided as a step up this year also be restricted for targeting marketing in the year ahead, just to continuation of the present arrangement. And in addition, it is recommended that an additional forty, forty thousand dollar grant be proposed to match either public or private sector dollars that may be raised to implement next fiscal year recommendations to improve the EDP organization and operations. That final report, I believe, is due to be received here in our community in the first week of June. I think we have a meeting scheduled or one or more meetings scheduled in the community to discuss that. We've been the recipient already of a, a number of those recommendations, and the final report is really just a compilation of what has already been presented to us. Parks and Recreation is proposed to be funded next year at two-hundred-and-thirty-eight-thousand. We're also providing a truck. We do other services for Parks and Recreation as well, and we're also planning to do additional capital improvements, as is the county. We're planning seventy-five thousand dollars additional, and I think the county is also planning that amount in order to continue our recent attention to long-neglected capital improvement projects at our Millennium Park. Danville, Boil County Airport is proposed to be funded at one-hundred percent of their requested amount. Stuart Powell is very specific in, in what those monies were to be spent for in terms of construction of new hangar. So we're, we're, I'm proposing that we fund that twenty-five thousand dollar additional ask of the airport, under the condition, basically, that the county reimburse the city for one-half of the property insurance that we provide to the airport. We have done that for a number of years, and if the county doesn't pay their half of the bill to insure the facilities, that insurance cost would be deducted from the proposed allocation. Planning and zoning, we've had a lot of discussion in our community about the need for or the, the lack of a need for to go five-days work week. The budget, as recommended, does propose that we fund the amount they requested, seventy-five thousand, plus an additional twelve-thousand-five-hundred, which is our one-half of what they said it would take to go to a five-day work week. The additional money set aside in the budget is there if we all get to the point where we all conclude that a five-day work week is desirable, and if they actually move to it. If not, that's just held in advance. Community service, services. As noted during our extensive discussions, funding of community agencies generally falls into three broad categories, and I'll have to credit our commission with sort of in their own minds making this connection in, in a way. We have the, those community agencies that support the arts. Those are the Arts Commission, Brass Band, Community Arts Center, Pioneer Playhouse, Sister Cities, West T Hill, et cetera. We've got a second broad group of organizations, community wellness, I'll call them. We've got Bluegrass Community Action, CASA, Child Development, Family Services, Senior Citizens. And then we have the third general category of community services generally, and those include Big Brother, Big Sister, Helping Hands, our community CCHR, Community Human Resources. I, I don't think that's the right acronym for that, but Central Latino, Kentucky Adapt, New Hope Food Bank, Grace Cafe, Nursing Home, Veterans Appreciation. In my judgment, these community service organizations have specialized nonprofit missions that contribute to the quality of life of all residents and help make Danville a progressive and caring community. Proposed funding for the community service boards and commissions are listed on page twelve, as you know, of the proposed budget, and are generally recommended at lower amounts for next year. And we did, in our discussions, agree to eliminate some funding of some agencies. Those that remain, a, a big exception is the proposed new funding of fifty thousand dollars for Bluegrass Community Technical College to help fund the robotics and workforce development training so needed in today's highly technical industries. There are those lists, as I say, on page twelve of the budget, of some interest. Those in the audience are that three agencies are recommended for funding because they essentially provide services to the poor to benefit our community, and they're proposed to be funded at five thousand dollars each in the next fiscal year. Those are New Hope Food Pantry, Boil Mercer Helping Hands, and Grace Cafe. All the agencies that are proposed for funding on page twelve of the community agencies, in my mind, have met the public purpose expenditure test. I've enclosed the City of Danville ten-year capital forecast. Those details of, of our plans and our planned expenditures for the next fiscal year and the following years are attached. I won't go into that in great detail at this point, but that, those details we've reviewed previously, and we could do so again if you wish. The proposed budget for the next fiscal year sets forth a plan of action to address our identified needs for the year ahead, some of which we've passed over in terms of recognition for many years. Additional revenue is essential to implement continuation of services and to implement these new projected projects. I'll repeat that. Additional revenue is essential to implement continuation of services and implementation of new essential projects. To fund the scope of services outlined, it is recommended the City Commission act to amend our current occupational license net fee, net profits fee ordinance to increase each of those by one-half of one percent effective October one, two thousand and seventeen. That will allow the city to begin receiving money from that change in February of two thousand and eighteen, and those additional revenues received will allow us to move forward to implement these projects, all of which are needed, many of which have been needed for a long time, and all of which will contribute to our quality of life and future success here in this community. Now, I'll deviate from the prepared remarks just to offer a couple of comments. I think at the last commission meeting, either the mayor or some of the commissioners said, what are the sources of revenue possible, you know, that we could go to to raise the money that we need to raise? And I enumerated those at the last meeting. I'll say again that those are largely the occupational net profits tax. That's the bread and butter that most cities utilize to receive revenue necessary to operate. Some cities have a restaurant tax. We're not one of those fortunate cities, so that's off the books for now at least. Insurance premium tax is another larger source of revenue for cities, and we utilize that, and, and a couple of years ago, we adjusted that rate to eight percent. The eight percent, one percent increase in insurance premium tax generates about two-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars in additional revenue. So you could see that you would have to make a substantial leap in the occupational, I'm sorry, in the insurance premium tax to generate anywhere close to sufficient revenues for any of these projects or all of them collectively. Our property tax is limited, has been since nineteen seventy-nine. We have one of the lowest property tax rates in the state. The last time I looked at it, a couple of years ago, of those I looked at, we ranked number one-hundred-and-eleven out of one-hundred-and-thirty-two. To raise property taxes by four percent would generate the great sum of about sixty-five-thousand dollars. All of these numbers, a, a percent or two increase on the insurance premium tax, a allowable increase in the property tax, all fall woefully short of the magnitude of increase that is essential if we're to address the needs that we've identified. There are really no other current major sources of revenue available to us. So with that comment, I would respectfully urge you to support this budget as proposed, or tell us if you have an alternative what services not to provide. I, I think there could be some slight adjustment around the edges, but I think those slight adjustments won't get you away from the conclusion that you need a major adjustment in order to meet the needs of this community right now and moving forward. I think that's an inescapable conclusion. So I want to thank you for our many hours of discussion. The City Commission was inquisitive, proactive, and very much involved in a collaborative way to not only just recognize our needs, but say, how can we act to do this in the way that will cause the least pain to our community? And I would be remiss if I didn't say, you know, we heard tonight from some citizens, and I, I respect their views, but this proposed path of taxation, again, would levy the greatest charge against those who commute to our community and utilize our roads and streets and are basically taking advantage of what we have in place here, and it's not a disproportionate charge upon them, but it is recognition that they need to contribute to the community that we have here because that's where the jobs are. And my judgment, raising taxes on property, on insurance premiums, would be more harmful to the realtors in this community and more harmful upon the ability of our community to continue to attract wealthy retirees to our community. And with regard to, you know, business considerations, there, those are considerations in terms of whether we're competitive or not. One of the great considerations of our industry has been the fact that we need to step up and fund additional training efforts, and we're doing that through the BCT fifty thousand grant that got them a two-and-a-half million dollar in state grants. Again, that fifty thousand dollar appropriation, had we increased property taxes by the allowable amount, it would have all been basically utilized for that purpose. So we have very few choices. We can do less, or we can do more. I would respectfully urge we do more.
Thank you, sir. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Scott? Any questions, Rick?
Any questions? We, we appreciate your hard work. You look tired.
I, I do have one quick question. You, you mentioned that additional personnel for the nine-one-one center is still in the budget. Where, where does the medical nine-one-one stand then, where we talked about maybe that being a next year or the next year, whenever we can get it up and, up and running item? Is it still in this year's budget?
It would, it would be proposed to begin to be implemented in the next fiscal year. There's another very long story with regard to our necessity of relocating the present nine-one-one center to City Hall in order to not spend thousands of dollars additional to, to meet the technical needs of communicating with telephone lines. We don't have adequate lines out there. The building is, is not in a great condition. We need to supervise, we need to, more effectively, our employees. We'll have more of those. They should be under closer supervision of our police department, who they are now answer to. We have examined and have had some discussions with the county about the fact that our nine-one-one equipment, analog equipment right now is approaching obsolescence, being obsolete. Basically, we can't get new parts for it. It's very difficult to. We have to find used parts. So it's time to step up to the next generation of nine-one-one service, which would allow transmission by voice and video, which, as we know from some circumstances of nightclub deaths and so forth, are sometimes the only ways that can be communicated in, in times of great stress. So our equipment is planned to be upgraded in the fall and installed, one time new in City Hall, probably January. We would have training of our new employees and would hope to inception that new service in April of two thousand and eighteen.
And I think the mayor mentioned maybe checking with the hospital on, is that something we, an avenue we intend to go down?
I, I did, I, I did, as requested or directed by the City Commission, send a communication to the hospital saying, would you, could you possibly fund some of the additional cost or ongoing cost of this? The administrator expressed that she would take that up with the management team. I did that, I think, late last week, and I haven't heard back in finality, but I, I think there is some possibility for that, but it's not resolved at the present time, so we are at that point.
We also talked about regional nine-one-one, and I think that you had indicated that that would be quite a difficulty.
I, I think it would require a, a lot of study and thought, and while I do appreciate economies of scales can be achieved in a regional basis on a system such as nine-one-one communications, every system I've every system I've seen across the country emanates from an urban center outwards and not from a rural center inwards. And it would be difficult to do otherwise than to have the center here and try to achieve economies with the surrounding areas, I think, from an operational standpoint, from the use of the police department's time in going to and from the nine-one-one center. There are large issues of operations in any sort of regional provision of that service.
We certainly, you know, wanted to talk about this because this came up pretty abruptly as a new expense hit us here right at budget time. Pretty large expense as well. So, I think we appreciate the efforts, and I think the public appreciates efforts that we're looking at how to cost share on this.
Yes, I think my, I guess my opinion is, I think if citizens realize that the benefits to provide are not necessarily even limited to cardiac arrest, we have, by our own admission, a significant drug challenge in our community. We have individuals that accidentally or otherwise have overdoses. All of these sorts of things would be better served by having medical dispatch capabilities than not, and I think it would help us to address the needs of our community if we had it for multitude reasons.
Do you want to just keep going on into the city manager's report, or is that pretty much, do you have something else?
That's really the perhaps most technical or meaningful thing I would say tonight. I do want just to give a shout out to the fact that we are having our two-hundred-and-twenty-fifth birthday of Kentucky, and that, of course, begins with Danville. Jennifer Kirchner with the Convention and Visitors Bureau has put together an excellent program on June the first, I believe it is, that starts early in the morning, and our own celebration here in Danville will begin around eleven o'clock down at Constitution Square. The reason I mention this tonight, I had the opportunity to meet one of our local eminent citizens, Jerry E. Jones, who has written and presented to the City of Danville in commemoration of this two-hundred-and-twenty-fifth birthday. His personal research on the life and times of Walker Daniel, who actually was the individual who laid out the City of Danville, it has great detail regarding activities leading to the formation of Danville and other related information. This was presented to the city. I'm sure Mr. Jones, Dr. Jones retired, would be happy to receive requests for this publication from any interested party. I think our mayor may make reference to this in some small part during his comments during our two-hundred-and-twenty-fifth birthday celebration. And I'll close just by saying that Kentucky is an Iroquois Indian expression, and they were the surviving tribe that basically drove out the Cherokee and the Sioux Indians, I believe, and that their expression was meant to refer to Kentucky as land of our tomorrows, or land where we will once live. And so, I think we're fortunate to live here in Danville, and I commend this book to you for your reading. It's quite remarkable.
Very good. We are now at the second, here the public, which can talk about any topic that's on your mind. I'd be glad to hear from you.
I'll just continue what Ron was saying. First, I just wanted to thank you for your public service. I realize that decisions that are facing you are not easy ones, and I work with you folks a lot, so I appreciate all the thought and effort going into all the good work that's being done. Two-twenty-five, we're going to start at ten o'clock in the morning and go till about three P.M. The Friends of Fort Harrod are actually coming to do a reenactment. There hasn't been a reenactment in Constitution Square in over seven years, so we're excited about that. We're going to have reenactors actually inside the cabin. Dr. Jones will actually be there as Walker Daniel, telling his story all day for us, so you can come and ask him questions then. And as Ron mentioned, the program is from about eleven to twelve, when the majority of things will happen, so I certainly hope you'll be there. We're going to have some music by Doc Sheba's Rural String Band. Lydia Graham is coming to sing "My Old Kentucky Home." We have some toast. Stuart Sanders will join us, the Commissioner of Travel, Judge McKinney, the mayor. Some more music and some singing brief. We just want people to come and enjoy Danville all day and experience our history, and then stay and eat and shop downtown, and then go to Brass Band. So, thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, ma'am. We won't even charge you extra.
I'm Wilma Brown. This time, I'm up here to thank the city staff for various reasons. First of all, thanks to the city manager for putting the budget online. I mean, we, any citizen can access that. Now, of course, that can be accessed through public record requests, but we don't have to do that because it's online. So, any of us who are here today complaining about the budget, we can only do that because we have access to it immediately. So, I really appreciate that. That's a grand thing. The second thing is, oh, I want to thank Bridget and Code Enforcement. They're doing a great job on especially parking, which I was concerned about, but many other issues. And then the third thing I want to thank the staff for, last, I was here Thursday at a city commission meeting, and I mentioned to Donna that there were three-foot tall thistles in the Third Street parking lot, and what staff members should I see about that? And she said, well, I'll let you know. So, apparently she told, she mentioned something to Earl, and then Earl texted Tom, and then, as would happen in a small town, on Friday, Tom and I saw each other at Kroger, and Tom said, Earl said, I need to see you about something. So, Tom and I stared at each other for a few seconds, trying to figure out what that might be. And then I think I made the connection. I said, oh, well, it must be about Third Street parking lot. Today, not only were all the thistles gone, but there's mulch. It looks beautiful. So, I want to thank the staff for that. However that happened, but anyway, thank you.
I've heard good things about our parking officer, too. He's a very capable but very friendly sort of fellow. Anybody else? Yes, I see a latest contestant.
I would like to thank Tom and Earl also because I've been trying to get those weeds pulled out of that bed by another venue, another way, and I was, I failed for a month. So, thank you very much. I've just been sitting here listening. I haven't attended any of the budget hearings or anything, but I do have some numbers, with Michelle's help, that will put into perspective where we are and what your issues are, and very simply. One is, if we look back at the general fund revenues for oh-seven, oh-eight, ten years ago, they were ten million four hundred thousand. The agency allocations that year were four hundred thousand. Ten years later, our general fund budget is fifteen-nine, and the agency requests are eight hundred. What that means is our revenues have gone up fifty percent in that ten years, but our agency allocations have gone up a hundred. And therein lies the whole rub. And I sympathize with the people who spoke earlier who don't want tax raises. Also sympathize with those like Grace Cafe who want to be funded, and everybody's worthy, I'm sure, but therein lies the problem. And that's just the overall condition of the way things stand, and I'm glad it's your problem and not mine. Thank you.
I appreciate you saying that. Thank you, Ms. Handler. Anybody else? Any other contestants? Yes, sir.
Since I'm fairly new to Danville, could the commissioners tell me what their response would be if they were to be asked about Buy American in the budget?
Ask about?
Buy American products first.
That would...
My job travels, I travel all of the United States, and unfortunately, too many of the places that I go to have utilized overseas steel, for example, overseas technology. And quite frankly, the reason we have a lot of people sitting around unemployed, hungry, is because of things just like that. We need to try and buy American whenever we can. And I would encourage the commissioners and their deliberations going forward to consider, you know, making Danville a Buy American city. Thank you.
Good idea. Thank you. Anyone else?
We not only want to buy American, we want to buy Kentucky proud.
Well, if there's nothing else, then we'll move on to payment of the bills. Item number eight.
Commissioner's comments.
Oh, Commissioner's comments. I'm sorry.
Gosh, you know, pass me up a little bit here.
Totally inadvertent.
Well, we all know what's coming. American Brass Band, big time for us. We'll have that event come and go before our next scheduled meeting, unless I'm incorrect on that, so I don't want to miss that. I did want to take the opportunity, since we've been talking to Hershaw Train about energy savings, that Danville had that Energy Star, Danville High School, and that's who they use. And so, I thought that was an impressive article to have come out, and how proud they were of all the money they saved, and we're taking that on as a city herself, so didn't want that to pass.
You have anything, Mr. Terry? Nothing? You don't talk about your impending nuptials or anything? No? Okay. All right. I guess that's it. Now, we'll move on to payment of the bills. Item number eight. Can I have a motion, please?
Move to approve payment of the bills in the amount of four hundred six thousand six hundred twenty-one dollars and forty-four cents.
Second.
Do have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? All in favor of the bills as presented signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item nine is Chief Flug, I think you have this one, some surplus property?
Yes. Commissioners, before you have resolution number twenty-seventeen dash oh-five dash twenty-two dash zero-one, and it is for surplusing the SCBA air packs that we will replace this year with capital purchase. Below, you'll see the breakout of exactly what it is. It's twenty-seven Firehogs, fifty face pieces, and missing pieces, parts that were no longer needed in the replacement.
Do you have a motion?
Yeah, I'll move to accept resolution number twenty-seventeen zero-five twenty-two zero-one.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussions or questions for the chief?
Any surpluses? Are you selling this to somebody, or are we talking?
We're going to put, open it up for bid, sell. We will be putting it open for, open bid, sell.
Do you usually find a buyer? Do smaller departments buy?
We've actually had several smaller departments asking when they're going to come up for sale.
And what kind of money are you talking about here?
I have no idea.
Okay.
With hearing that, I'd like to recommend a revision to the proposed ordinance, I mean, resolution. The law authorizes the transferring of surplus property to another governmental agency with or without compensation. I was under the perhaps false impression that the property would be disposed of to another governmental agency without compensation. So, I would like to propose that we just amend the resolution to say with or without compensation, in case there are, in fact, no bidders for it.
I move to amend my resolution to what he said.
Thank you.
And I'll second that.
Very good. We have a motion is second. If no other questions, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Do we have a need for an executive session?
No, sir, not tonight.
Oh, sweet. I will entertain, and if there's no other business to come before the board, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
All in favor, leave.